I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education of Harrison District Two to order. And thank you all for joining us. We've got a nice crowd of people out there. And I know you're here for some entertainment from your kids, and that's absolutely wonderful. We look forward to that. That's probably one of the best parts of our meeting, is when we get a chance to have the kids come before us. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the board on any topic that's related to board work, please sign the roster before 6:30. And would somebody do the roll call, please?
Regina English.
She's out of town.
Jeanne Orozco.
She's ill.
She's not feeling well.
Linda Pugh.
Here.
Steve Seibert, here. Cory Williams.
Here.
Julie Loesch.
Here.
Anna Soto.
Here.
Okay. So we're going to have some of the students from Centennial lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Joakim Coleman, Aiden Mulcahy, Alexis Simmons, Genesis Diaz, Kayla Diaz, and Alyssa Rodriguez. And then followed by that will be, the students reading the mission statement are Josephine Safi and Jaden Dubey. Duba- I'm sorry, Doobie, is that correct? Thank you. I'm sorry. My name was always messed up when I was a kid. I tried really to get people's names correct, so if I messed up, I apologize. Everybody, please rise for the pledge.
At this time, we would like to invite Jaden Doobie and Josephine Safi up for the mission statement.
We are excited to read our key to mission statement. Our Harrison mission statement is graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good. Happy School Board Appreciation, Centennial.
Do we have certificates for all the kids? If they could come back up, please?
I think they're all there, Ms. Pugh.
They all, they're all great.
No, that came before I talked to Suzanne, so you need to transfer to that number.
Is there any printed change that we need to adopt on the agenda? I don't think the discussion is just for us to add it.
Yeah.
Everything got added that needed to, the calendar got actually attached to.
We only got...
In the comments, we can add, because typically we handwrite those. Or we've always handwritten them on the bottom of the cover sheet after we adopted it, or we have in the past. So we can, we could debrief that.
Okay. Thank you all. You did a wonderful job. So I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as stated. Second?
It's been moved by Cory Williams and seconded by Mr. Seibert. Is there any discussion or changes to the agenda?
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Oh, I get to do the...
If you'd like to hit the...
Oh.
To do the little fun thing. Okay, now we are honored to have Centennial Elementary do their presentation for us this evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are very excited to be here this evening. We want to thank our wonderful Board of Education, Superintendent...
We want to thank our wonderful Board of Education, Superintendent Burhansel, Rogerson, esteemed colleagues, Centennial families, staff, and students. We are very happy to be here tonight. Gracias por venir a nuestra presentación. Los estudiantes somos la razón por lo que estamos aquí. Our students are the reason we're here. We are Centennial Elementary. We're very happy to be here. We want to show you our most recent demographic data.
Aquí están nuestros números demográficos más recientes. Nos enorgullece de nuestros increíbles estudiantes personal y comunidad que valoramos a nuestra diversa población. Como puede ver, tenemos alrededor de 455 panteras. Somos una escuela muy inclusiva que ama a nuestra comunidad, como verá en nuestra presentación de esta noche.
We want to make sure you know tonight our presentation is geared at being inclusive. Inclusive of our students, inclusive of our families, inclusive of our staff, inclusive of special needs, inclusive of various languages. So we're very happy to be here tonight, and we want to share that we love Centennial Elementary, and we are 455 Panther strong.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Lane. I'm the Assistant Principal at Centennial. And as Mrs. Neuss said, we love Centennial. We love the community that makes up Centennial. And we're honored that we're here tonight to celebrate School Board appreciation. We have some amazing guests that will be part of our presentation. But again, we just want to say we love our school and thank you for having us.
Muy buenas noches. Nos gustaría presentar nuestra escuela primaria Centennial, y nos gustaría celebrar con ustedes en este mes. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros.
I want to introduce a student you already met. This is Jaden Doobie sharing something he's proud about from Centennial.
The thing I am most proud of is that we have many community partners supporting our school.
De lo que estoy muy orgulloso es que tenemos muchos socios comunitarios que apoyan nuestra escuela.
Also, I want to introduce Josephine again, who would like to share something she's proud of.
The thing I am most proud of is that Centennial offers many after-school activities that are fun.
De lo que estoy muy orgulloso es que nuestra escuela ofrece muchas actividades después de clases. Son muy divertidas.
We have an amazing staff at Centennial that makes our building a wonderful place to be. We have 35 certified staff, 27 ESP, one school psychologist, two social workers, one counselor, three special education itinerants. And we're very proud of the work they do every single day for our students and for our families. This is a wonderful picture of our staff in our brand-new library, which was remodeled this summer from the bond issue. And also, on the right, you see our amazing custodial staff and our nutrition team.
Tenemos un personal increíble. 35 personas certificadas, 27 personas de apoyo educativo, un psicólogo, dos trabajadores sociales, un consejero, tres internantes Esper. Estamos muy orgullosos del trabajo que hacen para los niños cada día. Esta es una foto de nuestro increíble personal en nuestra nueva biblioteca.
We do want to share our most recent CMAAS trend data. As you can see, last year was not our best year in reading, but we have grown a great deal over the years. We do want to let you know we are working hard with targeted interventions and collaboration with curriculum and instruction to improve achievement in reading. And we do also want to highlight that our math growth this past year was the best we've ever had, and our math growth this past year was 59.
Very good.
Aquí están nuestros datos de latencia de los cinco años. Hemos hecho mucho crecimiento a lo largo de los años. El año pasado fue nuestro, no fue nuestro mejor año en términos de lectura, pero en términos de matemáticas crecimos por 59 por primera vez.
We also want to take this opportunity to review our ACCESS trend data. Access is the assessment that all students who are learning English as a second language are taking, and our ACCESS growth was 64 above the expected 55. So we're very proud to see that poor trend on ACCESS and to see that we are growing our students at Centennial.
Estamos muy orgullosos de nuestra trayectoria accidente en las pruebas ACCESS. Aquí están nuestros datos de los últimos cinco años con las pruebas ACCESS. El año pasado fue uno de nuestros mejores años con un puntaje de crecimiento medio de 64.
I mentioned our amazing staff earlier, but I forgot to do one thing. I wanted to introduce some amazing staff who are presenting with us tonight. First and foremost, our translators are Ms. Bertiana Corral Ramos and Mr. Daniel Loa, both who went to school at various Harrison schools and now are employed with us at Centennial. We're super proud to have them here. Additionally, we have Dr. Vanessa Lopez, who's one of our special education... She'll be speaking later, but she's one of our amazing special education mild-moderate teachers. And then we also have our instructional coach, Ms. Kalen Dickey. We have had many highlights at our school recently that we're very proud of. As I mentioned earlier, we were one of the first three schools to receive a full remodel this past summer, thank you to the community voting on the bond issue two falls ago. Additionally, we have received our second Transforming Safety Grant, where we collaborate with the Colorado Springs Conservatory, who you'll hear a little more from later on in our presentation. Additionally, we've increased our technology immensely. Again, thanks partly to the grant, and also thank you to site-based budgeting. We've been able to increase our technology. We have nine computer labs, many that are mobile. And then we've also been able to ensure every student in third, fourth, and fifth grade English Language Arts has access to a technology laptop every single day. Additionally, we are very thankful. We just started Special Olympics at our school. We're very inclusive of our Sped students and our community. And finally, we have been now for the fifth year doing the Harrison-Cierra Volunteer Scholarship, where volunteers from Harrison High School and Cierra High School are able to apply and earn a scholarship that can help them get started at any college they choose to attend and are accepted to.
Hemos tenido muchos aspectos destacados en nuestra escuela recientemente. Transformación de bonos, nuestra subvención de seguridad transformadora, aumento de clubs antes y después de la escuela, aumento de tecnología, inclusión de estudiantes Esper que comienzan olimpiadas especiales, aumento de voluntarios y nuestras becas voluntarias para estudiantes de Harrison y Cierra.
When I came back to school this past fall, I was most excited about the new lighting. For example, there are many features such as dimming and turning on and off different sections of the lights. This helps with learning and distractions.
Cuando regresé a la escuela el otoño pasado, estaba muy entusiasmado con la nueva iluminación. Por ejemplo, hay muchas características como atenuar y encender y apagar diferentes secciones de luces. Esto ayuda con el aprendizaje y las distracciones.
We do want to take a moment just to review some of our accomplishments since we last presented. We are very excited that we were chosen to be the very first Urban School of Excellence in the state of Colorado. This is an award tied to academic achievement, academic growth, community partnerships, and a positive work environment for all staff, and a positive learning environment for all students. That was in 2017. Now there are two urban schools in Colorado, so we want to give a shout-out to Wildflower, our sister school, who also is an Urban School of Excellence. We look forward to seeing many other Harrison schools doing that in the next few years. In 2018, we won a Wellness and Family Engagement Award for all of our efforts to engage our community. I think it's a testament tonight to see our community here, to see our community here, the community that is able to access our presentation, because we are providing it in two languages, as well as it will be recorded in two languages, so people can watch it at home. We do want to also highlight that we were chosen as a Gazette Best of School in spring of 2019, and that was voters. So families, that was you voting, that was staff voting, that was our community. So we want to thank you for that. We also want to acknowledge the recent accomplishment of our students under Dr. Lopez's leadership. Our student science club, called the Yes Club, received the 2019 John Muir Land Conservation Award at a citywide event. I want to take this opportunity to introduce Josephine, who wants to tell you about another accomplishment Centennial has had in the recent years.
I love our amazing playground. We received a $200,000 grant from the Colorado Health Foundation so that we have an ADA-accessible playground so that all our friends can play together. Thank you to Mr. Rocha for helping us with this.
Me encantaría decirles que nuestro parque infantil recibimos un bono de 200,000 dólares de la Fundación de Salud de Colorado para que tengamos juegos accesibles de la ABA app para que todos nuestros amigos puedan jugar juntos. Le damos gracias al señor Rocha por ayudarnos con esto. Muchas gracias.
This next slide shows that the very best part of Centennial is our ability to unite our community. We are very, very involved in the community. Most recently, we attended the Educating Children of Color Summit, which I know Mr. Longmire helped put on. So we really appreciate Mr. Longmire for helping coordinate that. At that conference, the keynote speaker shared that the best way to help kids be successful is to give them extra opportunities, and lots of opportunities. And Centennial does just that through our wonderful instructional program, our amazing staff, and also through our extra community partners. You can see here we have many community partners listed. With that being said, it's not about how many we have, it's about what they do for our students. And one thing we've been very focused on is enlisting the help of community partners to help meet the needs of our students. So for this next portion of our presentation, each board member has a calendar in your bag, and board interns, you do as well. And this calendar is going to help us honor and highlight a community partner each month. We also do want to thank our soldiers from Fort Carson for coming tonight to show support for Centennial. I'm going to turn it over to our staff to walk you through, starting with January, starting with our Cierra basketball team.
In January, we honor Cierra's basketball team and J ROTC. They support Centennial by delivering a community program using the Junior Achievement for a Day curriculum, sponsoring our carnival, and serving food at multiple events. This is our fifth year with a partnership.
En enero honramos el equipo de baloncesto de Cierra y J ROTC. Apoyan a Centennial al ayudar a ofrecer un programa comunitario utilizando el Plan de Estudios Junior Achievement, patrocinando nuestro carnaval y sirviendo comida en múltiples eventos. Esto, este es nuestro quinto año en esta asociación.
Thank you for your support with volunteering at our carnival and Saturday Winter Wonderland. Cierra Stallions.
In February, we honor the Rainbow Cubs. They support Centennial by fundraising and donating hats, gloves, and snacks for all Centennial Panthers. This is our first year with a partnership.
En febrero honramos a the Rainbow Cubs, los cuales apoyan a Centennial recaudando fondos y dando gorros, guantes, y snacks para todas las panteras de Centennial. Este es nuestro primer año en esta asociación.
Thank you Rainbow Cubs for your amazing donations and showing us that kids can do anything they set their minds to.
In March, we'd like to highlight Harrison High School, specifically the Leadership Club, the Early Childhood Education Class, and the Junior ROTC. All of those classes and organizations from Harrison High School have been wonderful role models and volunteers at our school. They brought their kindness campaign. The Early Childhood Education Class has come and observed our teachers, and even had the opportunity to teach small group reading. And as you can see from one of the pictures, they joined us on Dr. Seuss Day, and even dressed up as Thing One and Thing Two and many other characters, and made Dr. Seuss Day a wonderful event for our students and our staff and our families.
En marzo queremos honrar a la Harrison High School y varias actividades y clubs de su escuela por apoyar a nuestra escuela Centennial y voluntar en muchas cosas comunitarias que nos ayudaron a organizar grandes inventos como el día de Doctor Seuss. Esto es nuestro sexto año en esta asociación. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for helping spread kindness at Centennial.
Gracias por hacer nuestra escuela un lugar feliz.
We also want to celebrate April, the month of the Southeast YMCA. And we miss Ms. Orozco tonight because she was one of the instrumental people in helping us establish that partnership with the Southeast YMCA, which we've had for approximately five years. We have had the opportunity to have YMCA staff on-site four days a week during afternoon recess, facilitating games and making recess more active and helping our students learn sportsmanship. Additionally, we've been able to travel to the YMCA for a field trip each year to experience time with athletes from the Mountain West Conference who have facilitated games with our students. And most recently, along with Wildflower, our students got to access the YMCA. Third graders were able to go to the YMCA for eight weeks and receive swim lessons from YMCA swim instructors.
En abril honramos al Southeast YMCA. Esta es una gran asociación que comenzó con la visión de la señora Orozco en colaboración para brindar oportunidades deportivas a los estudiantes de Centennial. Lo damos gracias a ella porque Centennial tuvo la oportunidad para darle clases de nadar a nuestros estudiantes. Esto es nuestro quinto año de esta asociación. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for offering sports at recess, the water safety grant, and the Mountain West Conference field trips to us. We love the YMCA.
Gracias por brindarnos varias oportunidades que nos ha dado a esta escuela.
In May, we honor our faith-based organizations who give so much to Centennial. Solid Rock Christian Center, Way Out Ministries, and Cause I Love You. All support Centennial by providing volunteers to support with Field Day, barbecuing, or our end-of-year breakfast, and also City Survive. I'm City Serve. This is her third year of the amazing partnership. With their help, we have had our over 500 hours of volunteer service in the past two years, and every child received a brand-new pair of shoes at the start of school in 2018.
En mayo honramos a nuestra organización basada en la fe que da tanto a Centennial. Solid Rock Christian Center, Way Out Ministries, y Cause, Cause I Love You. Todos apoyan a Centennial al proporcionar voluntarios para apoyar con el día de campo, parrilladas, nuestro desayuno de fin de año, y también servicio a la ciudad. Este es nuestro tercer año en esta increíble asociación. Con su ayuda, hemos tenido más de 500 horas de servicio voluntario en los últimos dos años, y cada niño recibió un par de zapatos nuevos al comienzo de la escuela en 2018.
Thank you for your support. Solid Rock, Way Out Ministries, and Cause I Love You.
Gracias por su apoyo. Solid Rock, Way Out Ministries, and Cause I Love You, Colorado.
I love you.
In June, we honor the Catamount Institute. They support Centennial by providing scholarships and great opportunities for outdoor education. This is our first year of this amazing partnership. We look forward to many more years of this partnership. We love having Yes Club, the young environmental stewards at Centennial.
En junio honramos el Instituto Cuaima para apoyar a Centennial a proporcionar becas y grandes oportunidades para educación en aire libre. Este es nuestro primer año escolar. Muchas gracias por su apoyo.
Thank you for giving us opportunities for amazing field trips and environmental education.
Gracias por darnos oportunidades de excursiones increíbles y educación ambiental.
In July, we honor the Conservatory. They support Centennial by partnering with us to write grants for before- and after-school programming, summer camps, and also individual and small... summer camps, and also individual and small-group vocal, guitar, and theater lessons. They even helped manage to create a special summer program for Centennial students, and this is our third year with this amazing partnership.
En julio honramos al Conservatorio. Apoyan a Centennial al asociarse con nosotros para escribir subvenciones para la programación antes y después de la escuela. Los campamentos de verano y también clases individuales de grupos pequeños de voz, guitarra, y teatro. Incluso realizan un programa especial de verano para Centennial el verano pasado. Es este nuestro tercer año de esta increíble asociación.
Thank you for your support, Conservatory. I love making songs and being a part of the Conservatory.
Gracias por tu apoyo, Conservatorio. Me encantó hacer canciones y ser parte del Conservatorio.
In August, we honor the McDivitt Law Firm. They support Centennial by attending field trips, hosting carnival events, helping with Field Day, donating school supplies for an entire grade level. This is our seventh year with this amazing partnership.
En agosto honramos a la firma de abogados McDivitt. Apoyan a Centennial asistiendo a excursiones, organizando eventos de carnaval, ayudando con el Día de Campo y donando útiles escolares para un nivel de grado completo. Este es nuestro séptimo año de esta increíble asociación.
Thank you for investing in our school each and every year and sponsoring our kindergarten students.
Gracias por invertir en nuestra escuela cada año y por patrocinar a nuestros estudiantes de kinder.
In September, we honor the 615th Engineering Construction Company Fourth Engineer Battalion Soldiers. With their support, we have been able to put on amazing community events like our Thanksgiving Feast, Saturday Santo Wonderland, and Science Night. We are so excited about our ongoing partnership with Fort Carson and love the 615th Engineering Group.
En septiembre nos gustaría dar gracias a la ingeniera de construcción y a nuestros soldados. Con su apoyo, hemos podido organizar increíbles inventos comunitarios con nuestra fiesta de Acciones Gracias, el sábado de Santo en Wonderland, y noche de ciencia. Estamos muy contentos con su asociación y les damos muchas gracias.
Thank you for being amazing role models for us. We appreciate your support of Centennial Soldiers.
Gracias por ser muy bien modelos con nosotros y agradecemos su apoyo con Centennial.
In October, we honor Care and Share. They support Centennial by sponsoring our Send Hunger Packing Backpack Program. This is our ninth year of this sponsorship.
En octubre honramos Care and Share, el cual apoya a Centennial al patrocinar nuestro programa de paquetes de comida. Este es nuestro noveno año de esta asociación.
Thank you for ensuring all of our Panthers have food on the weekends.
Gracias por asegurar que todos nuestros panteras tengan comida todos los fines de semana.
In November, we want to highlight the Street Soldiers Motorcycle Club, who has been an amazing partner of Centennial for the past nine years. This amazing group of gentlemen support us with our annual Thanksgiving Feast. They are there every Thanksgiving Feast at 8:00 a.m., ready to slice about 1,000 pieces of pumpkin pie, and they stay through the last lunch and serve all the families. They also do a yearly food drive right before the holiday season to ensure we can send food baskets home with families that are in need over the holidays. And then they also join us for our reading events and various other events throughout the year. We really appreciate the Street Soldiers.
En noviembre le damos gracias a los Street Soldiers. Ellos apoyan nuestra escuela con voluntades para eventos y han donado comidas y útiles escolares para nuestros estudiantes. Este es nuestro octavo año con esta increíble asociación.
Thank you for being positive role models we look up to, Street Soldiers.
Gracias por ser modelos muy positivos en nuestra escuela.
Finally, in December, we want to thank UCCS, which has now been a partner with Centennial for three years, starting with a student teaching program that we have had amazing learning teachers in our building for the past three years, and they're with us for the full year, earning certifications in general elementary education, special education, and CLDE. It's an amazing experience for them, and it's also a wonderful experience for our school. Additionally, we had staff from UCCS join us for volunteer hours for our family feast in December this year, so we're very thankful for UCCS as well.
En diciembre le damos gracias a UCCS por disfrutarnos, a trabajar en todos los estudiantes, maestros, y en nuestro tercer año de esta asociación. UCCS también sirve como socio voluntario para nuestra escuela.
So, as Kim said earlier, I think the most amazing part of Centennial is our students and our families, and then the community organizations that just make it a wonderful place to be. We're very thankful for them. We also wanted to highlight that playground that Josephine mentioned earlier. So, you can see a couple pictures from our ribbon cutting from the playground, and also students enjoying it. So, we are, again, very thankful and appreciate our community at Centennial.
Le damos gracias a todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad por ayudarnos a hacer nuestra escuela un mejor lugar. Como ve aquí en esta foto, hemos hecho varias cosas para hacer nuestra escuela un lugar mejor.
Finally, we just want to highlight a couple things we're looking forward to. We just started our third cycle with our PDSA process. PDSA stands for Plan Do Study Act, where teachers and our instructional paraprofessionals are collaborating to really hone in on skills that students really need support with during intervention. So, we're very excited about the PDSA process to help students increase their achievement. Additionally, we're very excited about Science Night, and we invite you to join us. It's an annual event in February on the 6th at 4:15, where we will have many community partners putting on science exhibits. And also in March, we're excited again for Dr. Seuss Day. We hope you will get your costume ready and join us to read to students. And then we're also, again, very excited just to be using our brand-new remodeled building, and very thankful for our community who voted to pass the bond issue two Novembers ago now.
Estamos entusiasmados con PDAS's Plan Do Study Act. Nuestros maestros recopilan datos individuales de los estudiantes y luego crean grupos de estudiantes para lectura y matemáticas. Revisamos el progreso cada ocho a diez días y reagrupamos a los estudiantes. Esto garantiza que los estudiantes reciban instrucción específica para lo que realmente necesitan durante el tiempo de intervención. Próximos eventos, noche de ciencias el 6 de febrero a las 4:15, y Dr. Seuss Day el 2 de marzo. Gracias a la comunidad por todo su apoyo.
So, before we close things out, we want to wish you a Happy School Board Appreciation Month one more time, and I know Jaden and Josephine also wanted to share that with you as well.
Happy Board Appreciation Month.
So, we also, we mentioned the Colorado Springs Conservatory earlier, but we're very excited to have some very special guests from that organization with us tonight. I'm going to introduce them here shortly, but then we're also excited to have some students just quickly perform a song they created from a recent field trip. Like we said earlier, this has been an amazing partnership we established thanks to the Transforming Safety Grant, in which we collaborated to write a grant, and we have earned this twice now and received approximately $50,000 each time. So, now totaling over $100,000, which has allowed us to have students access the Conservatory, both onsite downtown at the Conservatory, and then bring their instructors to us at Centennial. So, I want to introduce these amazing people that make up this wonderful organization. We are very honored and delighted to have the founder and CFO, Ms. Linda Weiss, with us tonight. Additionally, additionally, we have the COO, Ms. Heather Steinman, with us tonight. And before I turn it over to them, I also want to introduce their instructors, who have been working with our students to prepare the song they're going to perform in a couple minutes. We have Mr. Jeff, Mr. Beau, and Ms. Janey, and they are just amazing, amazing role models for our students. And I think you'll see the amazing things that they've been doing with our students here briefly. But first, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Linda.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, for the record, I am so not the CFO, okay? My board, if my board were watching, they'd be like, "Oh, God, don't do that." I am the CEO. That's all right, because Heather and I had a little chuckle. But no, thank you very much, both of you.
Just one letter off.
Yeah, just one letter off. But who's paying attention, right? My name is Linda Weiss. I'm the founding CEO of the Colorado Springs Conservatory. We are 26 years old, and I am proud to say that we have a 19-year history with Harrison School District. And I'm standing here this morning. It is still morning for me. I don't know where you guys are on your day. I'm standing here this evening as a proud partner, and none of what I'm going to share would be possible without the committed and trusted visionary leadership of you all. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, and I wish you could be a bug on the wall, because what I'm about to share with you is on account of you all. We are now in an evolution and a continuum that includes continued work with Head Start Chamberlain. They just started again last week. We're now at Panorama, Monterey, Centennial, Mountain Vista Homeschool Academy, and I'm really proud to announce, would you hand these out? That thanks to a very generous gift from our partners at Ent Credit Union and Children's Hospital in El Paso County, we are now undergoing a pilot program where we are in every single early Head Start program, early Head Start classroom with our Piccolo program, because it's shown over the years that we are really preventive and upstream when it comes to not only arts and music, but early intervention literacy. So, we're going to embark on this journey, and we will continue to keep you apprised, but just know now, we are in front of, in part of, your birth-to-three-year-olds in the classroom. So, again, thank you. We are now, I'm really proud to say this, just under 1,000 students that we are impacting in Harrison School District on an annual basis. Think about that. And when they go into our after-school program after the eighth grade, we know that we get 100% of those seniors into the colleges, conservatories, universities that they choose to go to. So, here's, I know, it's impressive, isn't it? Who knew? But here's, here's an invitation for you all. One of the challenges that we have at the Conservatory is with every child that comes into the after-school program, we have to scholarship them. And we work tirelessly with our foundations and our corporate sponsors, but here's something magical that's happened. I put a shout-out to all of our, really, our state musicians, our friends, and our mentors. And we have a rock star concert coming up this Sunday at Stargazers Theater, 6:00 p.m. Includes The Reminders. How many of you know The Reminders? We've got Wayne Wilkinson, we've got Tony Award winners, we've got Grammy nominees, and these are all people that live here and believe in this program, and they're performing, they're donating their time to raise scholarship dollars. And I'm here to tell you that a very lovely woman, an anonymous donor, stepped forward and said, "I will match up to $60,000 for scholarship, whatever you raise that evening." Now, I'm willing to give you all a ticket, and if you want to bring a friend, please come and hear this incredible story and hear about this incredible work. So, I'm going to hand these out to you all, and you can take one and pass it down, right? It's not a test. It's all good. No one gets graded unless you don't show up. But no, for real, that's the beauty of this community. And so, they see the impact. We live it. Some of them teach. But I invite you all to come, and again, I thank you for your incredible leadership, and I hope to see you Sunday night. And now, I'm going to turn it over to my dear friend and colleague and COO, okay? Heather Steinman, thank you.
Thank you. I am also not the CFO. However, it would be, let's leave it at that. So, I wanted to thank everyone here this evening. One of the things that I have the pleasure to do is work with Kim and Kelly on a daily basis. And when you have the principals' text messages three times a week, making sure that everything's clear, I just can't tell you the level of impact and pride and joy that we have been able to partner with Centennial. It has been the most impactful partnership for us. I can tell you that we did a recital at Panorama, and Mr. Lane was in a musical. This is the level of commitment we are talking about, and he was not good. At all. But he stood up there. It was hilarious, and the kids loved it, and the staff loved it. But the level of commitment that they have and the culture that they've created in the school is something unlike any other. And so, all we hope to be able to do is be a part of their day and keep on being a part of that culture, because we truly enjoy the partnership and couldn't, all the staff have been fantastic, the leadership is fantastic. The years that we have been able to come up with, Kim calling me on a Saturday and going, "I have this idea. Can you guys do that?" And I always go, "Yes." And then I'm like, "Linda, can we actually do that?" I actually don't know, but I'm sure we can, because so far, we've done everything. So, but once again, I just, I just am so thankful to be part of someone that truly knows how important partnerships are in the community and that we're all here for our kids, and that as many hands and as many arms and as many people holding each other up that we can possibly do, we're only greater together. I know so many of the other partners that they're working with, we work with too. And so, it's so nice to have a school that just opens up, says, "How can we all do this better together?" And you're very lucky to have Kim and Kelly in the district. And I know that you have so many wonderful schools, but personally, they are near and dear to our hearts. So, I want to thank you, and I thank Mr. Jeff. Is it time?
It's time. You guys ready?
Okay, here we go.
Our school board yeah, they work for me. Making us a better team. Our school board gives us awesome support. Giving us the greatest reward. And women at the table to help us so we are able to read and write and learn about our favorite fables. Don't forget about the arts, that's my favorite part. Playing with my friends, the fun it never ends. Our school board yeah, they work for me. Making us a better team. Our school board gives us awesome support. Giving us the greatest reward. More than just time and money into me. New school to call home, yeah, that's where I'll be. Swinging on the swings and gliding down the slides. You know what that means, I don't want to go inside. Just kidding, got new chairs, new desks, new attitude. And our teachers are the best, that's why we got gratitude. Hey, thanks to school board, we appreciate you, and you, and you, and you. Our school board yeah, they work for me. Making us a better team. Our school board gives us awesome support. Giving us the greatest reward. Our school board yeah, they work for me. Giving us a better team. Our school board gives us awesome support. Giving us the greatest reward.
So if you can imagine, all of the fourth graders descended on the Conservatory one day in January, and they wrote that song. A hundred kids came through the recording arts studio. They all wrote different songs. I know that Kim has some things for you that she'll probably explain later. But there's a couple of different songs that they wrote, all based on their community, on the school board, things they're learning about. And that's really what it's all about with these community partners, is the kids learning how deep and how important those community connections are. Because it's context, right? That's where they're getting all of these different, these different opportunities to understand how much and why it's important to give back and why it's important to be a part of their community and part of their school. So I know you have other things, but if you do want tickets, please call the school. We're happy to give them to you. Just call the school.
We just want to thank all families for coming out, all staff for coming out in the Conservatory for making our presentation great. Thank you. This concludes our presentation, and happy school board appreciation. Do you have any questions for us?
I was wondering where I can get that CD, because that's a hit.
So the very best part of that is each board member does have a CD in your bag. And students, they will be leaving with a CD tonight from your goodie bag. So again, thank you for this opportunity. We love our partnerships, and we love the Conservatory. Thank you. Have a wonderful night. Oh, any other questions?
Wow, there's really not a whole lot I could say after that. Very amazing. Very seldom I would get emotional up here, but that, you know, pretty close to being emotional. One of the things I love, and having all the parents here, I really, really, as elected officials, we're stewards of your money. And the bond, it's so great to be able to touch the students with, directly touch them with the funds. So many times, there's all this money and nobody ever, there's nothing that connects to them closer than the facilities. It's tangible, you're able to see that. I want to personally thank each and every constituent voter in here that supported the bond, that put this board in place to be able to do that. As a Harrison graduate myself, I want the most for our community, absolutely, positively. There's no question. And I'll work tirelessly to get all the funds, all the facilities to all the kids. So that's, that's great. That's really all I could say. Fantastic presentation. Thank you, Kim, for all you and Mr. Lane do. We appreciate having a staff that is so engaged.
Thank you all so much. Happy school board appreciation from Harrison.
Thank you.
You have to go on to work.
Right? Yeah.
Now, do I, can I, does that mean item number five has been taken care of? We were sung to? Oh, there's more to it? Okay. The next, the next item on the agenda is School Board Recognition Month.
So as everyone, most people in the room know that this is School Board Appreciation Month. And not everyone might know, but this is not a paid position for you all. You donate your time, and we cannot have a better group to support our students and really believe in our students and our community. And so on behalf of the district, we thank you. We have a special present for you that, Mr. Rogerson?
I certainly will.
Is going to give you. But really, we just can't say thank you enough, and you give of your time for our students. And on behalf of our students, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Tell him we made it ourselves.
No, we didn't make that. And then we also have another special present from our administrators. So two board members aren't here, so we'll start with them. If you had something for President Orozco, could you bring it up? And Ms. Armbida will help get that to her.
Oh, wow. I'll just jump in while there's a little-
Or someone else might take it before she gets it.
I'm Ms. Orozco today. Might be.
So what schools is this for, Ms. Orozco?
So, I'll show the picture. So there's pictures of kids at Sand Creek, and Squatchbeto, and Oak Creek, and Otero. And they spelled out, "We are Harrison. Thank you to our 20." And then there's school swag, and some of her favorite food.
Thank you, guys.
Nice, nice.
And Ms. English? And who are the schools with you, Ms. Godwin?
We made all the little pennants at Flowerflower, Guyerson, Harrison High School, Panorama. And then we have a quote that Ms. English always says, "Stay ready so you don't have to get ready."
Yes, she does.
She does say that.
Yes, she does.
Thank you, guys.
A lot of school swag.
Thank you, guys. You can leave right here.
Here.
Over there with Ms. Armbida. And who had, our secretary, Mrs. Pugh. Just because there's no basket doesn't mean it's not great.
There's no line in the back. No, there's no line in this, but thank you so much for all the news for all of us. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much, Linda.
And Linda has gift cards from personal funds. Wonderful restaurant.
She will enjoy them, I'm sure. How about our director, Mr. Seibert?
Nice, very nice. Oh, there in the back. Pictures of the kids. Oh, wow. Stop hanging. I'm Mr. Seibert also.
So this is from Bricker, takes Pete, Mountain Vista, and-
Very nice. Am I supposed to take?
You can set it down in front, maybe. Set it down right there.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Use your pictures later on.
And Stratford Meadows. And of course, because Bricker's there, there's like 4,000.
Yes, great, yes. Those were fantastic. Thank you all very much. That's great.
And last but not least, our treasurer, Mr. Williams.
It's not on my bag. It's not on my bag.
So we are-
My happy place.
Centennial Carmel Sierra High School and Career Readiness Academy. And we are so honored that you get to bring your energy and joy and humor to our buildings when you visit us. So you've got some swag, and don't lose.
The gift card thing and personal-
Also, purchase gift cards.
Thank you very much. Could you set it down there also? Thank you very much. I love you guys, love you guys. Thank you so much.
We truly appreciate our board and all the work they do for our schools. And they are personally committed to the success of each of our students, and they know how important having a great staff is. They're committed to make certain that our climate is always welcoming for all of our teachers and all of our students. The work they do to promote our community and our schools just goes beyond the measure of, just full measure of what you can give. I appreciate all the schools, the administrators who contributed to this, to recognize this board for all the work they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It's very humbling, you know, as a, as a public servant. It's, it's, it's great to get things, but it's really great to be able to impact. There's probably, Jeannie would say, "There's probably nothing she's ever done harder in her life." I've heard her say it dozens of times. She probably wouldn't mind me saying that. There's probably nothing I've done that's grown me as much in the past six years as setting on this board. So thank you all for this. It is very, very humbling. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is an honor to be able to be here and support the children and the students of this district. So, and thank you for your confidence in us, you know, elected positions that people chose us to fill this role, and it is quite an honor.
The number one thing that people told me when I was walking door-to-door knocking to get my petition signed and all my signatures is that, they said that it was a thankless job. And that's certainly not true. And I see that it truly is a thank, a thanking and thankful job when I see, especially students are writing songs for us. So I don't know how many people you know who have songs written for them, but that's truly amazing to me. I truly love the kids. I'm happy to be a part of Harrison now. And of course, you all know, I'll be in your schools. I've visited most of you already, and if I haven't seen you yet, I'll be there. So I look forward to working with all of you for the next four years. And we are Harrison.
Matters reserved for board action. We have to do an adoption of a revised fiscal plan and budget. Ms. Becker, do you have a presentation for us? Is she here?
Uh-oh. Not here.
Why Norma's getting me set up the-
It's way on.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? It sounds like it's on. I'll talk louder.
We have to-
Sorry, I'm getting back from hearing all that great excitement and the music sitting in the back, so that's wonderful to hear. So appreciate, hope, I'm sorry, I don't have a song or a tune to do revised budget to. No, thank you. Maybe John can hum a little over there. We can make the revised budget, so no. Thank you, Norma. So good evening, Board of Education. We're excited here to bring before you our fiscal year 2019-2020 revised financial plan and budget. So while we are providing at a high-level bird's-eye view, please let me know any questions or anything you may have. We have about 20 slides here to review, so we'll go through them. And again, if you have any questions as we go along, please let me know. I always like to take a moment to talk about our compliance with legal requirements. So state law allows for all school districts in the state of Colorado to adopt a revised budget by January 31st. For a variety of reasons, it's not necessary, but the state does allow for that. And one of those is the board resolutions that all school districts adopt the budget resolution gives the authority for expenditure authority. And that is what we're held to at the high level from the state. So again, just to, we are in compliance with our legal requirements. So tonight, at the end, there are two resolutions, I believe the board has, that we will need a motion on for adoption, so that is our goal this evening. So here we have, within our budget here at Harrison, is made up of 10 different funds. And tonight, the recommendation for the revised budget includes only five of those funds. And they're listed out there in the change column. CDE requires that we bring before the board for revised budget any changes, and then we're going to talk briefly to those. But again, I really like this as a pictorial from that high-level view. Just a reminder for all of us that we are almost a $200 million organization. And again, we know that. A big change is we see in reviewing, you know, our building fund. Very thankful and excited about that. And that is what's adding to the increased expenditure authority. Okay, so if anybody noticed, general fund was not, did not have a change column, not on the list. But with the general fund being our main fund of operations, I just wanted to give a couple talking points on it, so no revision necessary. But I would like to point out, and as I feel like budget season's already started for, now we have to say 2020, 2021, I know that we're going to be having these conversations very soon. And a large part, what drives our funding for school districts in Colorado is that per pupil revenue. So currently for Harrison, when we think of all those fabulous Centennial kiddos, the students that were just in here, we are funded Harrison $8,758 per pupil. This year, it's, I think the board's aware, we're undertaking some demography work and really excited about it. Excited to understand, analysis, and to review. Our pupil count this year, as far as our district schools, have shown that we're down 294 students from the prior year. Our charter schools have increased 121 from the prior year. So again, it's enough to look at. It's enough of a change from the prior year. How now does that affect our funding? Very thankful, within the Colorado school finance laws, they have what's called five-year averaging. And sorry, I was in the back again, just tabulating and looking at those numbers. So we, while we are down this year, we have had four prior years that have been stable and higher numbers. So for this year, we are not having seen any significant decrease in the revenue because of the five-year averaging. Now, if we were to hold constant, have the same pupils we have right now this year, and again, we're down from the prior year. Next year, the effect on that five-year averaging, we would lose funding equivalent to 69 students, which is just a little over 600K. So I think really, as we think about it, it's very much, yeah, per pupil revenue and our students. So more to come on that. So that's really thinking about pupil count. We'll be starting to talk about budget soon, and that'll be a big component. And then we did have a fund balance change as a result on our budget. And just as a reminder, this is, I know we did budget last May and June, so we're still talking this fiscal year. But just, it's good to reflect any changes in the fund balance for the general fund. And here, that's noted on the next slide, on slide six. Board members, last year, we, when we did revise the budget, we did include the general fund. And as we look back on last year, this time last year, we were doing a mid-year salary increase. We were, I mean, we had a lot of other expenditures going on that really necessitated looking at our expenditure authority for the general fund. I really like this slide, although I know the term intergovernmental can be a little bit. That represents our state revenue. Again, why I really like this, our general fund revenue, because it so much goes into play with the conversations that are going on across the state on the Uniform Mill Levy. We are a district, as you can see, over 80% of our revenue to general fund comes from the state. Less than 20% local taxes, that's our property and our specific ownership tax. So again, as we all know, as the state, in efforts in legislation going forward, we are a school district that the state would like to see more at a 50-50 or even a 60-40. So again, we know that's, yeah, a lot coming down the pipe with that, but just to be cognizant of our revenue stream. Expenditure piece, while we have no change, just like to point out again, salaries and benefits comprise over 80% of our general fund budget. Okay, going to get into five of what we often call our other funds. Please holler questions, very. Our insurance, and if I go too fast. Insurance reserve fund, we are asking for an increase in the expenditure appropriation for this fund of about $92,000. And that's to account for some changes we have seen in our workers' comp and a change in deductible and just general repair throughout the district. So nothing major there, just as a point to note in regards to workers' comp. Last year, at this point in time, we had had one surgery. This year, we've already had five. So again, that just accounts for why the increase in the expenditure. Okay, our building fund. This, this one's probably the exciting one with music. You'll notice the big change here, and this one is due to the work that's going on now with the building fund. Very excited. We have some big projects coming up in the queue. I know we're Stratmore Hills, Stratton Meadows, Carmel, Harrison. And it's just really, now that we're, what, John, a year in already? I mean, it's really looking back. We're constantly reflecting, looking at the budget. John will Twitter in- the budget. John will Twitter in me to say, hey, I think we saved another 500,000 here, or where have you, but really, we're constantly a budget. So we want to ensure as we're moving forward with the projects this year, that we have allowed enough statutory authority in order, um, that we don't exceed our expenditure authority. Now, the bond fund. Um, just to point out really the change with the bond fund, and again, this is where all the debt payments happen through here. Um, again, we certified our mill levy in December, so that's the revenue, 110,000 less that just to account for as we certified in December, the mill levy. We have actual known numbers. And then on the expenditure side, this expenditure, um, is very precise, because all that's paid is our bond payment of interest and principal with some minor fees. And as we have started, um, last year, we all remember our investment plan, and going forward, we do have a monthly fee to pay for those services. So that's what's accounted for in the bond fund. Um, our health insurance one is one I know last year, we continued to do a lot of continue analysis review, even having conversations at the board, and those are continuing. Um, we are seeing right now, we've had an increase in enrolled participants from around, I think, 835 to about 877. Um, so why that's great, that brings in additional premiums and revenue. There's also offsetting claims. We also know that our, um, we're seeing some trending up with our pharmacy costs, we just want to be cognizant of. Um, and also our stop-loss claims, we've had discussions on those already this year, we're at three. So again, continuing to monitor our health insurance fund. Our pupil activity fund, this is the one where all of our schools out there doing all the great work with the raising revenues, fundraisers. And I know it doesn't, um, show on this slide, but looking at the prior year, it's great. This operates just cash in, cash out. And so therefore, if additional revenue is raised, there's probably going to be corresponding expenditures. So really great to see and why last year's information isn't on the slide, we've seen an increase in revenue collected, uh, therefore generating, um, an increase in expenditures. So we're just ensuring with the pupil activity fund that we have the appropriate budget, um, statutory authority. Okay, so here we go. Gotta have that. Slide again, in totality, again, our 192 million-dollar budget. Um, so our next steps, going to continue to review and monitor for 1920. Um, that's something we're constantly looking at in order to manage our fiscal resources. Um, I know, monitoring and the impact of legislative actions, that's really going to be key this year. There's an increased activity in school finance related items. Um, so I think we're definitely going to see a lot more positioning, ongoing activity, um, a lot more heavier than in current years. And we are starting to prepare and plan already for 2020 to 2021. And so look forward to that. We'll probably start having conversations, probably starting next month to start preparing for that. So thank you all. Um, any questions?
I would only bring up as we look forward to, to our next, our next set of bond sales. Um, I know that, that we had some positive effects from our, our rating. Uh, could you just talk a little bit about, and I know that there were some positives, and I'm sort of a loaded question, but would you talk about a little bit of the positives towards credit rating from, from the revised budget?
So really saying, yeah, how financially stable in our credit rating was, yes. I think what Steve's referencing is, um, we sold a large amount of bonds, um, a year ago. Oh, it was a year ago, it was right at the end of January last year, and with that being 100 million. And with that, because the dollar amount was so large, we actually did two credit, um, ratings, Standard and Poor's and Moody's. And very reassuring and just really great news that we came back again at the higher level, financially stable, excellent credit, if you will, to speak to that, which really parlayed to a wide variety of different, um, targets that they look at. But everything from management of the district to your fund balance to, you know, monthly expenditure. Um, so really good that we're in a great position.
Questions?
I'd like to make aware, we will do, uh, motions to pass these resolutions. The full resolution information is attached to the agenda that, that we work off of. So if I could have a motion about the revised budget and appropriation resolution?
In the absence of, uh, our Madam President, uh, Madam Secretary, I move that the board approve the resolution titled Revised Budget and Appropriation Resolution regarding the need for this board to amend the budget of revenues and expenditures for the school district, district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and the allocations and amounts that are specifically identified in the resolution.
Second?
Second.
By Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Seibert. Is there any additional conversation or discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one, we have to also have a motion for the use of a portion of beginning fund balance is authorized by Colorado statutes, so it's an additional resolution. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approves, uh, Madam Chair, I move that the board approves the resolution titled The Use of a Portion of Beginning Fund Balance as Authorized by Colorado Statutes, regarding the need for this board to authorize the transfer and use of a portion of the, uh, fiscal year 2019, 2020, beginning fund balance for the purposes named from each respective fund in the amounts and purposes that are specified, identified in the resolution.
A second?
It's been moved by Mr. Seibert, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any additional discussion or conversation?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I appreciate that you guys got to read the tiny print, not me.
Thank you.
Okay, communicating with the board, we're, we have, uh, we're up to a report from our student board representatives. Julie Loesch and Anna Soto.
Good evening, everyone. So since the semester just started off, um, I didn't really have much to report on, but I did get with Ms. Sherbin and, um, got some school updates. So the ECLC, which is Educating Children of Color Comforts, was this past weekend on Saturday, and we had about 50 student ambassadors and a teacher presenter. There were nine staff members that attended. Uh, we also, Sierra also won the Drive Smart campaign. Hertz Donuts partnered with Sierra to honor the honor roll students with the 3.0 GPA or higher. We have a rivalry game on Saturday against Harrison, so we have an assembly tomorrow. Um, students have also been working really hard on their access to prove proficiency, and there was an, an incre- increase on the PSAT scores. I also went around and asked a few students how they have been feeling so far into the start of this semester, and it has came to my attention that there are students who are feeling like, we just tend to go through the motions at school, like every day, that there are some students struggling or have things going on who don't know how to reach out, who don't know how to ask for help. And students are feeling like they matter less than those students who talk to teachers or just have a close relationship with staff. Some students also asked if it was possible to bring it up to the board and see if there was any way we can get our tennis course fixed up. Overall, as a school, we're growing and continue to grow. We still need areas of growth, as well as finding ways to gain more community involvement and bettering our mental and emotional health as a school. And that has been it for Sierra's update.
Okay, so I have two things to report on. So concurrent enrollment classes began at PPCC this week, and I saw an exponential increase in the number of concurrent enrollment students from other districts. So, thank you, Mr. Longmire, for getting, um, our program ahead of the other districts. And it's good to know that we're making a difference, um, in other districts and their students as well. And last week, Mr. Seibert, Mr. Williams, Ms. Pugh, and I spoke with sophomores at Harrison. Um, I think it was successful because students had a lot of questions, and I'm excited to begin the interviewing process.
And your reference with us speaking to the students was to what? What purpose?
What do you mean?
We, we spoke with the students at Harrison because Julie will be finishing up her time on the board, and so we're looking to get another student to take over from Harrison. We're looking at the sophomore class, so, um, we went and spoke with the sophomore teachers on Monday, and then they coordinated some times for Julie to be able to come in and speak to the classes with, one of us was able to attend as well, to let them know what the experience was like. We're recognizing that our students, our senior students are often in concurrent enrollment in their final semester of the senior year, therefore they're not in the buildings as much. So we've moved our process to replace that student board member into the spring, into January, so that we will have an overlap, um, and opportunity. And then next year, Anna would become the senior, and she will mentor the next one and so on, just to keep, uh, keep it moving. And so, um, I think it was helpful that, that Julie was willing to go and speak to the students and let them know what, you know, what the experience was like for her. So thank you for that.
You said it all, yeah. That's the first time that we've done that, that we've actually stepped into the classroom and, and engaged as many sophomores as we possibly could. Uh, the, the, the engagement from the students, I was, I was, uh, to, to coin one of our previous, uh, student board reps, Naasia, super excited to, to, to see, to be in the classroom, to be able to talk to them face to face, allow them to ask questions, what we do, who we are, oh, you're a whatever, or you've done a whatever, it, extremely valuable. And so I'm, uh, very optimistic about the process that, that we're embarking on here in the next few weeks of, of applications and interviews, so it was really good.
I think it's going to be a very, very, uh, difficult decision when it comes to replacing Ms. Loesch, because she's done such an outstanding job, uh, in representing us. Uh, her abilities along with Ms. Anna Soto at the CASB event were amazing and miraculous. Um, and I'm sure, uh, Ms. Soto will be able to lead our, our new student rep, uh, in the coming CASB event coming next year. Um, the interest of so many different students is, is going to make it really hard for us. Uh, their abilities to, uh, articulate how they are feeling and their goals in life and for this district as a whole, the most important part is that the students want to help the district. They're not just trying to serve on the board for their own, uh, personal, uh, in, in intent. Uh, they love the district just as much as our staff does, and I am looking forward to trying to weed out who that best student is going to be from Harrison for the next two years.
I can tell you, having been in that process for all of the years now, it's all, we have so many exceptional students. When you, when you boil it down, it is, it's very, very difficult. It has been every time, so you're, you're very insightful to say it's going to be difficult.
Did you have anything, we, we are hoping, our intent is to have a new, uh, student rep seated at the regular meeting in February. Did you have any update information on OE14 technology?
So this was something that I hear from the students at Harrison a lot, which is, um, about the restrictions on laptops for certain websites. And even though that's reasonable, there are certain websites that help with research projects, and I also encountered that my junior year. So, um, I thought that was important to bring up, because even though there's certain websites that should be blocked during school hours and at home, um, students need other ones to help them with their schoolwork as well.
Thank you. Um, we'd asked the students to particularly give us feedback on some of our operational expectation policies that they are more directly have, are impacted by, bad grammar, sorry. Um, and next month, we will be looking at the monitoring of OE14. So I was pleased that we were able to get a little bit of feedback, uh, from the students' perspective, because I think, you know, we can be in the buildings and we can sit up here and go, wow, everything looks great. And then the people actually using them are going, well, maybe not so great. So to have that extra information as we get ready to do the, the monitoring report next month, I think is very beneficial. And we have no comments from the public?
No, ma'am.
Superintendent Consent Agenda, we have, um, the personnel report and the financial statement. Do we have a motion for that?
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda items as stated.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Seibert. Is there any discussion or questions around the, those two reports?
I have no questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is where things speed up a little bit. Okay, monitoring board performance, the annual work plan. Is there any discussion around any changes or updates to, to that?
I, I have no additions or corrections.
No.
I, I would, I would say that we've, at the previous work session, we extensively, uh, went through and, and revamped. There were many changes, so, uh, quite a few, but all of those had, have been reflected.
Yeah, and we've, we've set for sure the, uh, the team building date. Uh, we're still waiting on, um, finding a date that works best for equity training and, uh,
Still waiting?
The board's self eval. I think that's still in the works. Okay.
Yeah.
So those will be added in the future. Okay, any legislative updates?
Uh, do we need to approve the?
No, that's a different. We're not on the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're on number 10.
Gotcha.
We will, though.
Gotcha.
Is there any legislative updates?
Uh, Dr. Berhansel and I attended a state superintendent conference yesterday, which had a couple of very interesting features we want to talk about. One was the fact that five of the superintendents we sat with were all from Harrison. Uh, just nice that we're producing leaders across the state.
We're all from Harrison?
Dan Snowberger, Wendy and myself, Dave McKenzie, all former Harrison people, and Elizabeth Domene. There was discussion yesterday about the mill levy equalization bill, which is not out of committee and it's not a bill at this time, but it's under discussion. The purpose of it is to equalize the mills that each district pays across the state. Uh, currently, they want it at 27. It has a negative impact on 75% of the districts in the state in that they're below 27 mills. We are at approximately 15, about 16 mills is what we are at. Um, so we would have to, if this bill passed, we would be required to go to the voters to ask them to add the additional mills, uh, which is, I'll, I'll talk about that if it becomes a bill. That, that's not something we're willing to do, especially since our community just committed to a bond for us. There is a penalty currently with, built into the bill, that if you don't do this, there'll be, uh, percentage of penalties. There's, there's kind of a 50/50 sense of whether it will even get out of committee at this time. Uh, if it does, come to the, uh, come out as a bill, there'll be a need to communicate with all of our representatives to make certain that there's a concerted effort to push it back. It's really, it's, it's the wrong solution for a real problem. Uh, it's just would not make it equal. It would just widen the gap between districts that might have economic, uh, challenges and those that do not have economic challenges. And there's other areas to focus on, such as perhaps removing Tabor, but this is, as I said, it's not out of committee at this time. But if it gets out of committee as a bill in its current form, it's, it's a negative impact on us, it's a negative impact on D11. Um, so we're working, and a negative impact on many, many rural districts who'd have a very difficult time meeting that. So we're very aware of it. We've worked with Shelley. Shelley's got, Shelley Becker's gone up to the state several times with Glenn Gustafson from D11. And although they say they welcome, welcome input, they were kind of shut down the last time they appeared. Uh, we're going to make certain that our voices are heard on this. There is one other item, Dr. Berhansel?
The other important item that's gonna probably drop in committee tomorrow is, um, a bill that will give the state auditor permission to audit the accountability system for the state. And that is very important, because that is the system that rates our school districts as a as exemplary or not. It will look at the assessments that we've used, it will look at the assessment cut points that have been used, it will look at the whole system, and is it getting what the state wanted it to get? That is very highly supported from all superintendents. The state board is probably not going to be supportive of that, but the state board doesn't get to decide on that, that's coming out of legislation. So we are excited to see that drop out. The other thing that's gaining momentum is Governor Polis is trying to put on the ballot in November for free preschool, and I just want to remind us that as though that sounds great, it's a hand in the privatization model, because there's not enough preschools to service all the students. So then it becomes, we go to private schools and we put our funding and vouchers into private schools, and so we're very leery of how great that might sound, but the realization of can we, as Colorado, support that in public education, no.
And Shelley has more.
No, thank you. I appreciate John's comments and thoughts, and it's really interesting, and if anybody really, one of the times I was back up at the Capitol with the CFO, D-11 Glenn Gustafson, and one of their board members, and I think to see that in action, and I highly encourage that, to really, when the state senators tell you, I'm sorry, if we've heard from you before, you don't get to speak. And so you really think about that going, we have one hour, ready, set, go, and I understand the value of their time and what have you, but also, again, you know, we're talking about students and what matters. What I do appreciate is our rural districts out there, a hundred of the hundred and seventy-eight are considered small and rural in Colorado, and this will be very devastating to them. So I really appreciate that the superintendent of Meeker came all the way to the Capitol downtown to have his voice heard, we had Gunnison and Bethune also on the phone, so I really appreciate that. And that adds into, I just want to say, Mr. Corey Williams attended last Friday with me the Colorado School Finance Project, his first introduction, and it does help, and I really appreciate it, having a board member also with me. I mean, I understand, maybe they see the same faces all the time, but with that, we had a very large, probably over seventy people, it's one of the largest I've seen. And in there, not only Corey there to represent Harrison, we had Pueblo Sixty, we had Adams Twelve, we had D-11, we had Jeff Coe, we had little board members, and so it was great, loved it, loved, thank you, Corey, for taking, we have another meeting against next month. But, but, yeah, please, now with the legislative, especially when it comes around funding, and especially the uniform mill levy, I'm sure Wendy and John have already seen a little bit, it's become a bit divisive, because everybody cares so much, we have the metro large districts, but then we have everybody else. So definitely, I think now, to echo what John says, now is the time to still continue our conversations with our representatives and to keep, because as the bill is still being worked on, and that's what they do say, well, we're open to feedback, we're open to feedback, well, you know, our feedback is
Back to the drawing board.
Yeah, and that hasn't been appreciated. So again
Welcoming?
Not very, not very welcoming.
You said it very nicely, too.
Yeah, John did a very, John did a very good job. So I really appreciate Wendy and John, thank, I mean, we're having engaging conversations there with their colleagues, I am with mine as well, and it's really interesting to see a number of us have all worked together across the state for years, and I appreciate the intent of the meeting Wendy and John had yesterday, because I think that's a recognition from the superintendents across the state. We're all in this together, it's not just Harrison or Whitefield or whoever, and that's, you know, continuing the conversation, so look forward to any board member that would like to come to, but I really, thank you, Corey, because I know that was taking time and effort on your part, so thank you.
I fairly enjoyed it, there was a lot of information, a lot for me to take in as a young finance professional myself, and I already thought, thank you before, but let me thank you in front of everyone, I appreciate you so much, she is a, a great mentor to me, I, I'm going into the same profession as she is, and it's just great to have you as well, and the district is, is happy to have you and blessed to have you as well.
Amen. No. Okay, anything else for legislative updates? Moving on, one more big item, and let me mention, as Steve started to, to indicate a minute ago, there's seven items on here that were discussed at great length at our work session, this is not just throw it on here and say yes, and we go on, we hash it out at the work session. So we have a, a number of items, the approval of our minutes from December, the monitoring report of Operational Expectations III, which is the treatment of stakeholders, we're changing the wording of four, or three of our policies, OE four, I have to remember which those are, hold on a second. OE four is learning, excuse me, Personnel Administration, OE five, Learning Environment and Treatment of Students, and the last one is OE eleven, Instructional Program. We made a couple minor, minor changes to some of the wording on, on those three. We also have, had presented at the work session the Results Progress Report for Science and Social Studies, the Results Targets for Science, approval of our annual work plan for the following of this upcoming June through July of twenty to twenty-one, and approval of the twenty to twenty-one Board of Education meeting calendar. So
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
That was a mouthful. I would move to approve the Board Consent Agenda items as stated.
I second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Seibert, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
Favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final item on the agenda, we've concluded our business, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Seibert. Is there any discussion that we shouldn't adjourn?
We have a little bit more, we could talk about a few more things.
I, I would again like to just thank the staff for, for the generous outpouring it, very, very truly appreciated, thank you.
We're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I, I, it was ahead of myself, no opposition, meeting is adjourned.